It's now nine AM. I'd like to open up our work session for July fifth, two thousand and sixteen. If everyone could please either silence or turn off their cell phones and then join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I say?
I have no changes.
Okay, our first item is a timed item landscape conservation project discussion, Levi. Okay. Please join us. And it's Levi Old.
Exactly, yep.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. What I do, I'll just talk for a little bit and then I'll show you all this map as well.
Levi, could you give a little bit of an introduction of your background?
Exactly, yep.
What this is?
Yeah, that's great, yeah. So, yeah, my name is Levi Old. I actually grew up way over in southeastern Virginia. And then I ended up at university, at University of Montana, and studied environmental sciences and geography there. And then I was on an outfitter up and down the coast of North and South America, really leading backpacking trips and river trips and things like that for seven or eight years. And then I recently finished a natural resource master's degree at University of Vermont. And while I was an outfitter, I lived in and out of Redmond, Oregon, so I got a feel for the high desert region. And although I hadn't been down to Lakeview besides driving through, I'd at least knew the ecology of the area reasonably. And then, yeah, I went to got this master's degree. I taught a little bit, some college courses last summer in my field studies courses. And then I took a position with this Great Basin Landscape Conservation Cooperative, which started on February first and moved to Lakeview. And so I've been here just for a few months. Yeah, I live here with my girlfriend. And she is a botanist for the BLM and she took the job here as well.
Okay.
We're just getting settled in, happy to be here. You also in town, so.
So where's Great Basin Landscape out of?
Yeah, so the Landscape Conservation Cooperative is, the other two staff, well, two of the staff are in Reno and one's in Boise. And they originally came from a Department of the Interior Secretarial Order, these landscape conservation cooperatives, and they exist all over the country. And although they are, you know, heavy government funded, they do have a steering committee which has tribes, government officials, kind of NGOs, kind of your whole wide range of folks. And they were kind of, these landscape conservation cooperatives were started five years ago or so around the country. And they were started kind of in these centralized hubs of science communication. They give out some research, scientific research money. And they hold some conferences and just to try to get people to kind of think in at these large scales based off of like, kind of ecoregional features, right? So this is the Great Basin one, and then there's one in the North Pacific and, you know, a Southeast Atlantic one. But, yeah, so, yeah, all of us that are employed by the Great Basin, two of the other people that I work with, one's a BLM staff, one's a US Fish and Wildlife staff, and then one that lives in Boise, he's more of a researcher and he's with the US Geological Survey. And I'm technically a temporary employee for the US Fish and Wildlife Service.
Oh.
So I, I'm up at Sheldon Hart Headquarters Office here in town.
Okay.
And I have my office up there.
Okay.
So I work with John Kazbon and Shannon Lewig and Gail and Aaron Collins and Kevin Goldy. Those are kind of the staff that are up there right now. But really, I'm kind of doing my own thing. I don't really report to any of them specifically, even though John Kazbon, who's kind of the head of the program up there, he sits on the steering committee for this project specifically, as does Todd Forbes and Elin Burkett down here with the BLM. And one fellow from the Oregon Natural Desert Association, a person from the Nevada Department of Wildlife, someone from the Oregon Department of Transportation. So I think that, that was our first steering committee meeting. Largely, I was doing outreach for this project for the first four months that I've been here. I still am quite a bit, like what I'm doing right here. And we still hope to build it out like we really want to. Someone from the Cattlemen's Association, I've been talking to both John O'Keefe and then the executive director of the Cattlemen's Association, Jerome Rosa. We would be interested, you know, if any of, if someone from the counties wanted to be involved. And I can show you our map, we cover clear way up into Arnie County and down northwest Nevada and a little bit northeast California. So what we're doing is this concept, it's called Landscape Conservation Design. And it's a new thing that first came from the Fish and Wildlife Service's interest in thinking more at landscape scale, thinking outside of refuge boundaries for management of biological, yeah, management of kind of doing conservation biology. And they were kind of thinking, we need to start thinking at a broader scale, which they've done in little bits in the past, but I think this is a more thorough effort for that. So they started doing some of these landscape conservation designs on their own, but they quickly realized that there's so many stakeholders that need to be involved in the process that oftentimes these landscape conservation cooperatives took on the leadership of these landscape conservation design projects. So we're kicking off this one in this region, doing a lot of outreach, trying to bring all the stakeholders to the table. And if you go to our website, I can leave my card or maybe you've already been there, but we have our steering committee meeting notes from the first meeting. And we're happy to take more input.
What's that website?
Yeah, here, let me give you the card. That's. And so we're, we're, we're trying to find our path right now. We're trying to have it, you know, there is some things that, you know, more or less we want to get out of it, which is, you know, thinking about conservation at kind of this larger scale, on landscape scale. But we also really want to leave it to a certain extent open to what the steering committee, you know, their interest at the table. So I try to be as much as possible, even though I know the most about the project, open to just guiding their direction. So we got to some kind of refined key issues at our first steering committee meeting. And those include, of course, fire, wildfire management, invasives, invasive species management, which are always big in this region. One was just thinking about rural economies and rural livelihoods, as incorporating that into the whole process. One was a management and better knowledge of current conditions of aquatic resources across the region. Another big one was wildlife connectivity. So where wildlife able to move, not only, you know, in pronghorn or mule deer on the landscape, but also potentially choosing some smaller creatures like the pygmy rabbit and things like that to see how they move throughout the landscape and where their genetics are being passed and stuff for their long-term conservation.
So have we developed the current condition, Levi? I hope you don't mind if I'm asking.
No, 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 please, please, no, that's great. It helps me kind of keep moving. So, current condition, so the first thing we did, we did, tried to do our homework as much as possible, which is we gathered over sixty land management plans throughout this whole region. So they're coming from all sorts of different agencies. And they have to, you know, BLM's operating on something Fish and Wildlife is, states are, and all those sorts of things. So we're trying, we're using this online tool called the Open Standards for Conservation. And we're trying to pull up shared priorities within this. Because one of the goals of this whole process is to find where we can do things on shared resources, pooled resources a little bit more. And so we've been, we've put all this information in the open standards. And right now, we're starting to take it on the road to vet it with all the experts in the science field. And so when I say expert, we've broken it down by habitats. So you have like Aswin Woodlands, sage steppe habitats, river, river habitats, salt desert scrub habitats, so these different habitats. And we're taking this to the experts across the landscape. And when I say experts, we're trying to get a good mix to vet through each habitat. So for Aswin Woodlands, we would like to have, you know, someone from the agricultural research station, someone maybe from OSU or University of Nevada or Reno. And then also some local agency folks on the ground to be able to give us feedback on that. So some, a broader spectrum of opinions. So it's not just all coming from a university or all coming from the agricultural research station.
I'm going to make a comment on committee makeup. And I understand it's early in the stages. I would highly recommend everything. Commissioner Winters would say the same, that we have someone from, from the cattle industry. But we also have someone from the uses industry such as world, or recreation.
Yeah.
I, you know, these are lands of many uses. And I think we need to have those, you know, those voices heard.
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wonder, we haven't gone too, because we're thinking so big scale, we haven't gone like too far to the recreation side of things. Although we do, we do have BLM representative, which of course, which those folks are managing for multiple uses, probably more better.
Yeah, I think somebody that's got a little bit more focus on, you know, because you are talking about the huge landscape. But I think someone that truly uses the public lands for that. You know, you could, you could equate it somewhat to the hunters or fishermen or those types. But just somebody who generally likes to recreate it out there for all the different aspects.
Yeah.
Regardless of where it's at, not on a small scale, but, you know, could represent the interest of that land base.
Yeah, that sounds like a great person. If anyone comes to mind, please let me know. I know I've not had the best luck. I've made phone calls and sent emails to like Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, Nevada Big Horns, Trotting Limited, and only started a conversation with a couple of those folks. And, you know, I'd love if there's local off-road vehicle groups and things like that. I think it'd be great to have their, say, at the table as well.
Yeah.
I've called the Oregon Hunters Association and didn't receive a call back from them. So I'm going to keep working on those first. But if anybody comes to mind that you really think maybe does a little off-road, maybe does some backpacking, quiet recreation, and then also does some hunting or something, that would be awesome. I know we're kind of.
What is the mission or the goal of this cooperative?
Yeah, good question. So we're still working to refine some of our key issues. And we'll have another steering committee meeting at the end of September, which anybody here would be welcome to attend. But I think it's to gain, to gather more shared priorities for conservation, for long-term conservation planning for these different groups. And, you know, maybe we have a huge, we end up focusing more on the human dimensions, like doing some socioeconomic analysis or something like that, or some values analysis of the region. Or maybe we focus more on wildlife connectivity throughout the region. We do like some spatial analysis using mapping tools and stuff like that to see where these creatures are moving. Or maybe we do a couple. It's likely that we're going to try to tackle a couple of those things.
There's a lot of need to do exactly what you're doing, but keep one thing in mind, keep the human equation part of it. Because with so many times, we work on these things and it's all about just certain species or this or that, or it's trying to save your house as the best example. We'll do away with all kinds of things, save this one critter out there. And we don't take all these other things into the equation. But as you're working on this, and we used to use a social economics. Anymore, and this comes from Judge Graski in Arnie County. Economics is what we worry about here a lot of times in these rural areas. I mean, whenever you have that much land out there, it can be the recreation, it can be development of power lines, it can be straightening out of the road, or it can be the mining. There's 1.9 million acres in Oregon that's going to be in the mining withdrawal right now. All these things have an economic impact to the rural community. Those public lands need to be preserved and taken care of the right way with multiple use. And so as you're working on this cooperative and everything, you know, cattleman is very important to us, that's part of our heritage, part of our culture here, along with your hunters, along with your rockhounds, along with your recreationalists. We're very fortunate right now on recreation, we're not overran. You go on up into the shoots, you know, out there. And then recreation has become a big thing. But we have to plan today to build, allow the right kind of recreation within our public lands and everything out there. And sometimes that recreation may go over into being a problem with the cattleman or the problem with other things. So as you're working on this, definitely get some local people, if you can, involved. All the good science and all this stuff is great. We're recovering from the drought somewhat. But what's going on today on those lands out there might be a lot different twenty years from now.
Yeah.
And so local input's really, for me, really important. And we have some of the best land managers interquing right out there in the middle of the BLM or the forest land and the cattleman.
Yeah.
And they're a tool, they're a heck of a tool for information. Some of them's five generations. They've seen the cycles.
Yeah.
They've seen the day when there's good wildlife, they've seen when it's bad. They've seen all these other things. So there's a lot of local tools, along with the good science.
Yeah. Yeah, I've been trying to figure out, you know, so I have a really big interest in that human dimension side of things. And it's, I've been trying to figure out what are the best kind of avenues of networking that sort of thing? Because of course, you know, it's, it's hard to ask for cattleman's time too, because they're really busy and they don't get paid like I do to do natural resource work, necessarily by the government, so.
Yep.
But I gave a presentation to the Lake County Watershed Council, Marcy Schreder, and she has all cattlemen on her board, so I'm going to keep them in the loop. And then John O'Keefe said he can't sit on our steering committee because he's too busy, which makes sense. But he did recommend me touching base with John Taylor, who I'd actually met at the Watershed Council. So I'm going to make an offer to see if you potentially be on our steering committee, but I think you'd be a great resource.
Well, going back to the socioeconomic, it's because the, in the federal government agencies, they would admit they're really weak there.
Yeah.
We talk about it, we don't do it.
Yeah.
But somebody that comes to mind that might, because she's involved with our Lake and Stewardship Group locally, is Emily Jane Davis from Oregon State.
Okay, yeah, I haven't heard.
And you could probably get her contact information from Pete Trader over here at the extension office. Emily Jane Davis. I spoke to her about this, oh, a couple of weeks ago, we had our stewardship field trip here.
Okay.
And we're interested in OSU eventually, in their original philosophy, hiring a social economic individual to help the agencies in the work they do.
Great, yeah, that sounds awesome.
So they're, they're very interested. And I talked to Emily about that and she was very interested, but that's kind of in her wheelhouse.
Is she based here or?
No, she's at Oregon State. She's a professor there, yeah.
Okay.
But she does get out and about. I think if you were able to make contact, if she, if she wasn't available, I think she might know someone that might fill the bill.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I made a call, a lot of people have been recommending Willie Riggs.
Well, Willie's, he was in that discussion.
Okay, good, yeah.
He oversees both of these extension offices.
Okay.
And when we were at the budget meeting here a couple of weeks ago, I asked that question, if OSU wouldn't be interested in their next, because they have a forester, Daniel Lavelle. But their next step is to locate a social economic individual here that could work the regional network.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that sounds great. Yeah, the BLM and the Fish and Wildlife Service have a few of those folks, but of course, they're very far away. And also, they oftentimes use tools that, you know, locals don't necessarily trust.
Yeah.
Like these headwaters economics assessments, a lot of people don't like those, but, yeah. So I'm looking for, we probably have built out like a small, human, tiny dimensions or socioeconomic team for this project in having someone.
Well, when you talk about headwaters, just really quick, we could probably have Ray Rasper down here and do some initial discussing, discussing, I know, right?
Okay, and what's his role?
He's the head of headwaters.
Oh, yes, okay, yeah.
I work with him and another one of his folks.
I know I get little, through my meetings and stuff, some of the local ranching communities, they don't necessarily trust headwaters. And that's, the feds tend to lean on, fed natural resource agencies tend to lean on headwaters as one of the organizations that they often use. But, and I think they are, they have a huge slant maybe towards recreation is the complaint that I usually hear, which is, depending on which way you're looking at it. But I was wondering if maybe we could get some headwaters folks to the table, that would be awesome. And then also some more local folks.
Yeah.
Cattleman and get them all on a team to work together.
As Commissioner Winters said, you know, our local interests are always circled by our local folks who use the land and maintain it and truly take care of it. They're, they're a key component, so.
So if I get a curiosity, you're, you're technically paid by US Fish and Wildlife?
So my, so my funding is pretty tricky. So I, I think there's an organization called the Great Basin Institute, which is a nonprofit out of Reno. And they do all my human resources work. And then I'm a temporary employee with the US Fish and Wildlife Service. But I really tell most people that I work for the Great Basin Landscape Conservation Cooperative because they're who I primarily represent. You know, that's where my staff bio is on their webpage and things like that. And the funding that for my specific position came through the Office of Wildland Fire in the Department of the Interior for their resilient landscapes money. So that's, that's crazy.
This is part of the Sheldon Hart's award last year.
Exactly.
Three point two or four minutes, so.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So I was just at their meeting the other day, we're trying to keep, we were kind of going to be the planning side of, because they're like mostly juniper removal and treating invasives is what they're doing, like really roll up your sleeves and get things done. And that money came in super fast and they had to apply for it really fast. So they didn't have the, the planning wing necessarily there. They're doing a lot of great, putting a lot of money on the ground in good places, I think. But we are, you know, ideally, the process I'm, we're potentially going through would inform where they put things on the ground and where money is vested and things like that. But we're definitely going to be a lot slower process, especially as we build trust and work with local communities and if we do the socioeconomic stuff. So they'll keep doing their thing, we'll try to stay closer related to them. And then hopefully, in the long term, we can inform some of the work that they're doing, but that's.
Well, I'm pretty straightforward. This is possibly one of your challenges, as you're trying to get people to come on and be supportive. And that is, most of the US Fish and Wildlife, the refuges, aren't well-supported by a lot of your local people and everything and their management practices. I almost see more of some of the management practices outside of, I'll use Park Mountain Sheldon. If they were to take on some of the management practices and take it on to the mountain, the mountain would be better. Cattle's the best example, use them as a tool. They won't even talk cattle. They're, they're more given where it's shut it down, no use. Where I don't want to see that starting to come out onto these BLM lands and into the Great Basin is it's more shut it down. Because I've lived and seen Park Mountain on wildlife, because I'm a hunter. I see where it's at today. And it is not even close to what it was in the seventies. It's almost shameful. So I sure hope that we don't take that management technique and start pushing it out here into the BLM lands. I think we could do a right reverse and start taking a different management and saying, okay, you, US Fish and Wildlife, it's been doing pretty good out here. Maybe we need to look at your management practice.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a fair thing. I mean, it's definitely a tough place for me to be in this position and technically sitting at the Fish and Wildlife Service office, but.
And that's pretty bold on me, I apologize, but that's just, that's what you're going to hear out there.
No, I know, I mean, I've heard that and I knew that coming into this position. And that's just, you know, the place that I sit currently and I understand that. I think that, you know, obviously, the Fish and Wildlife Service's main mandate as a mission is to, you know, you know, sort of protect the biological, you know, non-human entities first, right? And then the BLM has a no-use mandate, you know, and National Park Service has kind of managed for humans, you know, for aesthetic values and things like that. So there's all these agencies that have different mandates. But I understand that the local culture here, because of taking horses and cattle, or cattle and horses off of the refuges, that they aren't necessarily always the most well thought of.
But Levi, this is an opportunity to look at it every which way.
Certainly.
You know, that's why I look at it, and it's getting the people at the table.
Yes.
It's getting all of them at the table, and if radicals, one way or another, just sort of pushing them aside and come to the medium, the middle, and get some things done. This is an opportunity to try to get it right. But all agencies and everybody involved have to be open-minded to go and look at that.
Yeah, I agree.
And so hopefully, that's the way that this cooperative will be working.
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, we're really lucky to have, oh, this is another Fish and Wildlife Service staff, but Chad Carjes, who's the Malheur Refuge Manager up there and has been a longtime member of all the different collaboratives up there. And I think some of their resiliency through the occupation as a community was because they have been trying to work together up there. And he's interested in our project and we're going to be on our steering committee. But he's on the High Desert Partnership, which is a group up there that kind of looks at the socioeconomic and natural resources together. And then he's also has some great kind of co-produced science agriculture research center. It's really a resource up there for them, because they're kind of that middle person between like the further intense environmentalists and then the, you know, the rancher group. And then the ARS is kind of right there in the middle, so they bring people together, right? And, but anyway, Chad's been through a lot of that, so he's a great resource for us up there.
Well, let's get back to.
Yeah.
Who's your contact in Arnie County? Have you been before their board or anything?
So Chad is going to take me and introduce me, is Dan Ronald's taking Graski's?
Pete.
Yes.
Pete.
Pete.
Pete Ronald.
Oh, Pete, yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, so Chad's on vacation right now. When he comes back, he's going to introduce me to those folks. But we, so far in the project, we've given that whole region like a really big buffer. And we're just enough to go up there and start working. I've also been talking with Darwin a little bit about touching base with some of the planners and some of the commissioners up there as well, but they're definitely on our list.
Good.
The other, yeah, I don't know if there's other ideas from you all on who to touch base with in the ranching community. I mean, it's easy to go to the more kind of what the natural resource folks would call progressive ranchers, right? But I would love to be able to chat with even a broader range of, spectrum of ranchers. So I know I have the kind of, the baby's boot, the youth grazing association.
Yeah, the baby's boot group. I would think Myron Stewart would probably, I think he's sort of the kingpin on that maybe. Judy or Myron Stewart, they would at least get you going the right direction.
Okay.
What about Larry Maxwell?
Larry Maxwell? He's the Christmas Valley, off by the lake area.
But this definitely covers that area too.
Yeah.
North lake representation.
The side of the general, you say, is thinking someone like Tom O'Leary, but Larry down here.
Tom O'Leary?
Well, Tom's, Tom probably isn't that involved in a lot of this. But he's, he's a progressive rancher.
Larry Maxwell, because that's another part of the Great Basin, great. And then if you work with him, get ahold of Myron or Judy and they'll get you to the right person.
Okay.
Larry is a great, great thought up here, that part of it. And then John Taylor's just, he's exceptional, that's a great recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. So I'll just quickly show this map, so I'll pick up pretty much of your time. But Darwin, I think you've seen this as fast as you can. So what we've done to, and this is just proposed project boundary, but, actually, the town like you isn't in it, but we, we needed to draw the lines somewhere, right? We wanted to draw the lines based off of biological features rather than human drawing lines, because of course, Fish and Wildlife don't respect those. But the, these lines are drawn because these are all closed, based in watersheds, so all water flows to the middle, terminal watersheds. And we wanted to stay mostly in sage steppe habitat at first. And so we, we aren't, we don't have all the forests included, although we might have some representation from the Forest Service. This is only a little chunk of forest in Humboldt, Tawhawee we have right now. But you could, this is the watershed line at the top of the mountains for. But you could, this is the watershed line at the top of the mountains for the forest. So the water flows in here. Yeah, so. And we're thinking with socioeconomic, of course, these are all fuzzy boundaries. So I mean, if we had meetings or tried to do stuff in socioeconomic, components to the project, we wouldn't be thinking about larger regions. But as far as the kind of specific biological planning.
So what did, what's this thing?
That's red and old, A C E C.
Yeah. And that's, is that like a, that's probably a BLM, um, environmental conservation managers.
Area, area of pretty full environmental concern.
Yeah.
Well, our operations, right?
Yeah. Is that into geothermal?
No, that's cornerstone mineral.
Oh, cornerstone mineral, yeah.
Per light.
Would they be a good folks to connect with or?
Well, to have any discussion if we're talking about any type of other use, they went through the process with the BLM of expanding the footprint.
Okay.
It's a huge economic driver here.
Okay.
Lakeview.
Okay, yeah, I don't.
That's cornerstone, just out here in North Inntown.
I have, um, that's a huge area.
Yeah, it's giant. The, I have made an initial, um, effort to connect with Pacific Corp, um, to see if they would maybe want to have a representative. But we, we don't have a representative from Energy at the moment, but it would be nice to have them. I know that there was one of these projects in the arid lands of Eastern Washington. And, um, one of the things that recently came up was a power line, um, that they wanted to put in near the Yakima region. And the, the, the planning that had gone into this really allowed the, all the people to come into the table and kind of build necessary maps that they, and local species, where habitats were important, um, and where, um, you know, human aesthetics or aesthetic values and things like that were important. And then put the power lines where they wanted to put them. So. And I guess in Harney County, wind is, wind energy is increasing.
Sure.
And there's one of these in the Green River Basin where of course oil and gas is really huge over there. So they, um, reused, they had oil and gas folks at the table.
So the cooperative, as you get this going, will make recommendations to, is that how this cooperative is going to work? And if you get all this together, will, or will it be used for all of your information?
Certainly, yeah. So I think that, um, the cooperative itself, we, we kind of just see ourselves as the facilitators of the process. And ideally we can keep it ongoing. So it'll work, um, we'll take all that information. So this is biological information. And we'll, um, probably create an online interactive tool for decision makers to use. And then ideally we can continue to fund it so that we can come to the table and teach decision makers how to use it. And then also ask for feedback where there might be issues. So we can make it a kind of a process that continues to go on every process.
One of the challenges that we have here is, is lawsuits.
Yeah.
And so especially with the sage grouse and everything, so we need a way for protection for all different ways. So if whenever this cooperative gets going and everything, is that going to be considered good science? And, and if it is, then we definitely got to have all kinds of people at the table. Because of, um, whenever it comes down to the lawsuit, let's say a special interest group is going to sue BLM because of, there's going to be some kind of a new road or development or a power line over here. And then the work that you guys do as cooperatives is considered good science. And it might not be exactly the way that other people see it. But if it's used as good science, the lawsuit just goes dead and the BLM will lose.
Yeah.
Or it can be county or it can be private side. So if you're end product, will it be considered good science?
I mean, that's the goal, right? I mean, it's probably not everyone's kind of, that's not, not everyone's probably going to think. But you know, as we go through the, the vetting process and probably have some multiple iterations of the products. Then ideally it's adaptive and we're getting feedback. And if we can kind of wrangle people and keep them on board, even if they don't like it at first, then maybe we can take some of their feedback and make the next iteration something that they appreciate more of it. Yeah. I mean, I think what we want to use, you know, for science, you know, not only the type of research that comes out of universities and, um, places like that, but also just expert opinion on the landscape. So that could be ranchers or recreation values, you know. This general area, you aren't going to put your favorite fishing spot, but like this general area is really important for me and my family fishing or my family's ranching operation or whatever.
So who do you have on your cooperative from the state Fish and Wildlife?
So right now we just have Nevada Department of Fish and Wildlife, Mark Freese. He's habitat biologist. And, um, I have had a discussion with Craig Foster and he's going to be giving us input on the science information. But I don't think he's going to sit on our steering committee. And, um, he sent me to Chip Dale, who's, um, ODFW out of Bend. And, um, Chip was going to come to our first steering committee meeting and then he decided not to. And so, um, ideally we can, um, get Chip. I think probably he covers the whole area. So ideally we can get him.
So then I latch on to my interest, which is the wildlife side of it, and part of it. But in Oregon, all wildlife is managed by the state. So I would really think they would be the key player to set on there, especially if we're looking at trying to go landscape and see how wildlife, whether it's sage grouse or it's a pygmy rabbit or a mule deer. Where the state of Oregon manages that, those animals. I would think, and I would encourage for somebody from the state Fish and Wildlife to be, uh, very intimately involved in this thing.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, if you have any, if you know any of them, you want to.
Well, everybody's stretched in, even though, even though they get paid on a lot of acquisitions and everything, you know, that, that's the challenge. For all of us, especially any places to volunteer for these things, um, you need to be at the table. People just don't have the time. And I'm sitting here, you know, I'm sort of encouraged about hearing some of it and making sure the right people at the table. But, uh, Chip Dale is the key of, he should be making somebody from Fish and Wildlife, he should appoint somebody that would be part of this cooperative.
Well, I totally agree.
Yeah.
Huge. And I noticed on the map, and we're aware of it for thirty plus years, we've had these designated WSAs. It'd be really nice to have that discussion as we're going through this whole landscape. Whether or not we're going to continue to study them, whether we're going to designate them or we're going to undesignate, they're not designated. Get rid of them, find that we've got collectively a better place to have some type of designation for wilderness. Because they just haunt everybody.
Yes, I understand. Everybody gets up to wilderness advocacy organizations. Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're your local.
Here.
That's great. I love that. Um, have you got any, Harney County or these other any local government, whether it's commissioners, are there a point key on to the board yet or the group?
I haven't. The, the best that I did was I called and emailed Ken a while back. But really now I'm here to, you know, try to get, you know, someone from the counties involved. And also I'd like to do that in, uh, in Northern Nevada as well. California has such a small chunk that I offer, but it probably didn't have to be necessary, but.
So how often do you meet? Where do you meet? And would it include travel to other states, other counties?
Yeah, so.
If we had somebody that would be on their board.
Yeah, great. Um, we, um, are really hoping to keep the steering committee meetings in person to one day quarterly. And so the next one is, um, at the end of September, I think it's the twenty seventh, but I have to check. And that'll probably be either here or maybe down in Buena Mcca. And, um, we, we had our first one of those and we have a conference call at the end of July, just for a couple of hours. So maybe an occasional conference call based on needs, but really just that one quarterly, day long meeting. And, you know, as the project moves forward, it's possible that, um, that's just a need based thing. But right now we'll try to keep that rhythm a quarterly, at least probably for the first year. And then otherwise, you know, being able to help us make some connections to certain introductions to certain people. And, um, just, you know, spread our kind of networking out and hear from our voices, I think, is one of the primary roles of those folks. And then also to be a conduit to their agencies, right? If they're coming from a steering committee or if we're producing any products, that they're able to go back and get feedback from the other folks that they work with. And, you know, in the natural resource realm, you know, pass, if it's BLM, pass it to the state level and also pass it to your Lakeview District or your, um, Burns District or whatever it may be.
Well, I've got a great candidate who's wanting to give up on any of the quarter.
Who's that? You're interested?
No. I, well, I shouldn't say it that way. One of the, one of the entities that's under.
You are on camera, sir.
One of the entities that's underrepresented is a passion of yours, Commissioner.
It, it is, um, but sort of concerned, quarterly meetings, um, something that is going to be considered good science. When you get to the end, it doesn't seem like that's very aggressive to have, uh, local or input from, you know, I.
That's a great, that's a great point. So there's a lot of other meetings going on. So we kind of see that we have these several layers of teams. And so the way we've done, we have a team we call the backbone team, which is myself and actually Fish and Wildlife Service staff primarily right now. And we're hoping to get one person from the BLM. And then anybody else that's willing and we're happy to have them on the team. If they, um, can give up some of their paid time, because we're looking like, I mean, I get, I'm full time, but you know, there's folks that give between ten and twenty-five percent of their paid time for this backbone team. And then there's, um, the steering committee, um, as you know, probably we, we, we probably wouldn't go too many more than ten folks, but somewhere around there. I mean, it could be a little bit fluid. Maybe someone will be on it for a while and then I'll leave and I'll send another person or somebody else to come on. So we have that. And they're kind of drive like the larger kind of decision making processes. And then we have, um, a science and technical teams. So in there are pretty loose teams, but right now we've synthesized all these plans into this, um, framework that I was talking about online. And we're starting to go out like next week, um, yeah, next week we'll be in town. I'm going to meet with Marcy from the Watershed Council. I'm going to meet with two BLM biologists. I'm going to meet with Craig Foster. And we're just vetting this science information.
You haven't brought in Lake County Resources Initiative yet.
I've ta, I've talked to Jim and Christie.
Because they're going to be doing some monitoring down here on some of our BLM lands.
Yeah.
Forget what the monitoring is.
Yeah.
It's on the sage grouse maybe.
Yeah, they do. And then they also have their water monitoring, um, with the old biology teacher who's lived here as well.
Other handles.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, they do all that with them as the unit of work and so forth on all the forestry related projects.
Yeah, yeah.
Jim Walls is really good at, of working with a diverse bunch of people.
Yeah, I kind of thought he would be a good steering committee and I offered, I met with them and offered it and they were kind of.
He's, he's slowing down. He's trying to slow down, but boy, get him involved, he.
He's a great resource.
Yep.
Yeah, he is. And innovative with kind of the natural resource economic combination too. Yeah. So we have these series of teams and, you know, we're happy to have, you know, steering committee member be involved more, be giving more input. We also like are really careful with the quarterly things based on like.
I'm, I'm understanding the structure now. That helped me a lot.
So you can give input all the time.
Yeah, every day I'll take emails.
Well, I, as, as a board, yeah, would you, would you email us when your meetings are and?
Certainly.
All that type of stuff. And maybe it turns out that we can be involved at some level.
Yeah.
You know, um, we'll, we'll discuss as a board if somebody wants to take the lead as one of the commissioners. But, um, I think this is pretty darn important to, well, it's huge. It's three states.
Yeah.
And, uh, I don't know how many square miles that cooperative is, but it's huge.
Yeah.
Huge. So going to have a lot of different opinions, a lot of different, well, and, and a lot of different type of ways to manage the landscape. Just, you know, different elevations, different, oh, different watershed, even though it's all part of the close basin.
So do you, do you have a figure on that? Cause I've just taken a while to guess and say twenty thousand square miles.
Yeah, I think I always forget, cause I'm like around the landscape. I can't remember the amount of, um.
Probably closer to sixty.
I wanna, uh, yeah, monk hammer, but thirteen million acres or something like that.
So that'll be about twenty-four thousand square miles.
Boy, good thing I didn't bet that dollar on that.
You did. You earned it. Sign dollars.
Yeah.
Very interesting. So, so what is it that, uh, that, uh, county commissioners can bring to this other than being on the steering committee or anything? If you need use of, if there's room for meetings or whatever, schedule one with Denise, which is great.
I agree.
Avenue, if you want to use our, I know you have that out there, but this, this sort of comes in as sort of a neutral place, I guess.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, we had our first steering committee meeting at the library and that back. Yeah, I would just say, you know, the invitation is very much open to have you all come. You don't have to be at every meeting, but if you wanted to come to some, or if you wanted me to be a conduit and information to, like I can, uh, if you can't make a meeting, I could go through like it and then get some feedback on things for my, for my folks and things like that. So that's kind of where I see myself is being that middle person. So.
Well, I want to, as possible, I know you're very busy. You've got a little day to do a road trip.
Okay.
Yeah. See some local views and local history.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I mean, Commissioner Champ, Commissioner Kessler, all those can do a road trip per day out onto the Baynes Butte area, Heart Mountain. Around just, um, hear some of my stories.
Yeah, that sounds awesome.
Sometimes that's of quite a bit of value just to see what some people seen for many years.
Certainly.
So I'd like to stay in touch with me and we'll try to schedule a day that we can just make a road trip.
Awesome. That sounds good. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So the best way to, is the best way to stay in touch with you all through Denise or through director?
You got your card handy?
I don't have a card handy. It's on the website. You call me twenty-four hours a day.
Okay.
Two one nine eight nine four is my cell phone. And, uh, obviously all of our emails on our website plus our cell numbers. If you're trying to schedule something for a board of commissioners, you go through Denise, it's much better that way. If you want to get a hold of me individually, just give me a call.
Okay.
Very open to that.
Sounds good. Okay. Thank you. Any more questions or?
Darwin, do you have anything on the, the land use side of it?
Well, that, and that's why, um, Levi, when he came to the town council, I, I brought up, you know, bringing, uh, board commissioners and, and, uh, the planners in, into the, you know, discussion. Mainly when you look at your map and you see a lot of that white, it's not got the colors of either Forest Service or BLM. You have to consider, you know, those private property owners in there. And, you know, there's some really large property owners, you know, those ranching operations that exist on that landscape. But then there's also the, you know, the, um, you know, Christmas Valley area, the, um, the Meadowlands area, which is Burns, um, to Buchanan and Crane, all that, all that middle area. That there, there are, you know, multiple property, I mean, just thousands of properties out in those areas that, that this, you know, your map at least takes in as well. And with that also, we, we've got developers that are here now, uh, up City and Renewables that there are a lot of solar projects, certainly in Lake County, that are going on in, in that Christmas Valley area. But, um, I'm glad that you've now come before the town council and, and board commissioners so that we can get the planners to be at the table with you so that we can discuss, you know, again, not just the social economics, but truly just the economics of it. Because there, there are a lot of, uh, you know, land uses that are on that landscape that, that could be affected by this overall conservation effort that, that also takes in, you know, private property. And so, um, we need to look at that and certainly give our input. And I, I look forward to making a trip up to Harney County. And when you do go before them and just to, to get, you know, part of Lake County's, you know, uh, discussion with them, you know, at the table at the same time.
Yeah.
And I think you'll see in Harney and Lake County both on the BLM ground called checkered board.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
One miles, one square miles private, one square miles public. So a blanket designation or a blanket, blanket use. So, a blanket designation or a blanket, blanket use usually impacts the private land ownership.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the things that was brought to our attention with the, my check card just up in, in Harney County is that a lot of what comes out of these projects are spatial designs for decision-makers, so kind of like blobs of conservation priority or restoration priority or whatever it may be. And that, when you throw those maps down on the table, if you bring a bunch of people together, especially if they weren't all part of forming it, that they immediately are devised it, especially when they go across private land boundaries. And so, we've talked a little bit about how we're going to approach that and, you know, whether or not we just more provide an interactive tool where people can go online and they can create that map as a group, but they have the resources there to create it versus creating a bunch of maps and then throwing them out on the table and having immediately, being immediately devised. The other thing is, is that it's likely that when we go to collect data and, and put it into geographic information systems and make maps and things like that, that we aren't going to have any data for any of the, the private lands anyway, right? So, maybe there's places we cut that out, or if there's a lot of private landowners that do want to work with us, which would be awesome, but I don't know if that'll happen or not, that we can do our best to work with them and, and, you know, make maps that include their, their private property, or we can just cut it out.
Well, I, I think in the BLM, heard this from Judge Grassi and myself both, right now's the time to do it right, because there's such a push for anti-government. Talk about the occupation in Harney County and all this. Everything's being watched, and there's so much anti-government right now. Anything like this cooperative or anything to do with the government lands that affect the private lands, it needs to be done right. Has to be done that the public accepts it. And that's a challenge.
Yeah.
Because it is a challenge. But we, we have to do that. Right now, we have to, because of across all the United States, it's, it's anti-government, especially if you're on the federal side of it.
Yeah.
So, these cooperatives and everything, it's, it's time to do it right. With Judge Grassi and I, we talked that way on the mineral withdrawals. At one point, nine million acres in Oregon, there's ten million across western United States. Now's the time to make it right.
Yeah.
Because if, if we do it wrong, or if the agencies do it wrong, it's just going to fuel the fire.
Yes.
And so, instead of look at the problem, look at the opportunity, I guess is what I'm saying. We have an opportunity to make it right.
Yeah.
And, and the private landowners as per that, you, you, if you can find a way to get them at the table, that's important. Very important. I'd talk all day. I'm sorry, Mr. Champ.
I wouldn't let you talk all day, but-
I might have a hard time stopping. Thank you, Levi.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. We're forward to the, you know, work.
Yeah, sounds good.
Stop by anytime.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Okay. Do we need Dave here for the?
I sent an email to Phil today, and Phil's here about a half an hour ago, so evidently they're not available. This is just an annual designation for the newspaper.
And we've got it on tomorrow's agendas, and I think we're going to be designated once again.
Oh, it can be.
State board.
Dave won't be here today at all.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, he got a pre.
Okay, the OHA mental health agreement number one-four-seven-seven-nine-three amendments eight and nine.
Eight and nine, those, Chris Ollie, and he's not going to be here to talk about those. If you look at them, one of them has padded dollars, the other one has dollars on the gambling treatment that is not going to be used. As I've researched on our mental health side, on the gambling side, is that they've had a really hard time trying to have anybody with the gambling problem come forward to build leverage of dollars. So, that nine thousand five hundred and twenty-eight dollars that our state funds that come in, have to get those out on the ground, so. But both amendments are acceptable. We'll do those tomorrow.
Those were both reviewed by Kimberly Lagan, our interim director with no issues.
Okay. Great timing. We have our next item. Commissioner?
Sure.
We just recently received a jail inspection.
You ready for that?
Yes. I say great timing.
Oh, okay.
Get sat down, get back up.
Sorry. It's a long one.
About time you showed up for work. It's almost noon. What time you start and quit at hour midnight last night, back to work at three this morning? Two-thirty.
Before you start, Sheriff Todd, just so you know, we've got you on at ten fifteen for time dial, you know?
Great. I'm just early.
Or ten-ten. Excuse me.
Okay. Commissioner, on June twenty-seventh, we had our, by year, jail inspection. As you are aware, the jail, this inspection team is, consists of multiple agency law enforcement group put together by the Oregon State Sheriff's Association. They come in and they conduct an intense inspection of our jails and specifically deal with inmate cleanliness, cell cleanliness, the overall cleanliness of, of the facility, as well as meals, procedural, things that, that we do. They monitor medications that the inmates get, how they're distributed, how we account for them, distribute them, and so on and so forth.
They basically go over the whole list of jail standards that we have to be in compliance with, I would assume, Sheriff.
They, they do. There's a list of, of hundreds of, of expectations that each facility in the state of Oregon has to comply with. Our overall rating on that inspection was exceptional. In fact, they said specifically to me that due to the age of our facility, that they were impressed with how, how clean it was. Which brings me to a complaint that we received approximately May eighteenth by Mr. Gonzalez. He pointed out that, that there was complaints that the shower stalls had mold in the facility, that the, the clothing appeared to be uncleanly and smelled, that the lighting conditions were too bright. The heating ducts produced sounds that prevented the inmates from sleeping at night, and that there was methane gas being emanated by the, from the toilets and the showers. Now, when we received this, this inquiry complaint, whatever we want to refer to it as, I had Under Sheriff Paul immediately check into these allegations, which we determined were unfounded. There was nothing that existed in this inquiry that was believed to be a concern. Now, with that being noted, we didn't say anything to the inspection team about this, because we want, what we wanted to do is have them go in and, and objectively evaluate our facility. They, they did the inspection in the cells, within the laundry facilities, the clothing, and none of these allegations were founded, meaning that there was no fact or basis to these allegations at all. The only one that they didn't have anything to rate was the lighting conditions. The lighting conditions are up to the facility manager, and it's bright or dim depending on, on safety and inmate safety. So, there's a standard in which we keep the lighting, simply for safety purposes. I realize this isn't the Marriott, but there's some things that we can't comply with complaints by the inmates, the lights being too bright, the lights being too dim. It's for the safety of our staff and safety of the inmates. So, the light conditions are going to remain the same. So, this is the only thing in Mr. Gonzalez's complaint that will not be addressed, is, is at the discretion of the facility manager, so. But the other ones were unfounded. Our overall rating was exceptional, and I would like to make note and give praise to Corporals Stacy Rogers and Corporal Rick Goldbeck.
That's outstanding, Sheriff. Congratulations to you and Under Sheriff, both of the corporals you mentioned, as well as the rest of the team here in the county. I know you all take it very serious, and it's obvious by the review panel made up of folks from around the state that they believe you're doing an outstanding, exceptional job.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. I had some notes written down, but of course, with my exceptional managerial experiences, I left them or forgot them somewhere, so. I had some more to add, but I-
Well, the, the board of commissioners, as you know, we tour yearly. That's one of the compliance things. We actually toured it the day that the complaint came in, and it was very obvious that the place is exceptional up there. But any time that you get in writing and we have a letter in front of us that it passes with an exceptional grade is unbelievable. And for the two corporals, thank them very much, and the rest of the employees that, that worked along under their guidance and your guys' guidance, that, that's a team up there. They do very good.
They do. They do exceptionally. Now, this rating here that we, we received is even better than two years ago. And as we have seen during the ratings, they're progressively going up. Now, there's some things up there that we can never comply with. For example, the exercise yard. We don't have it. We're never going to have an exercise yard for the, the inmates in this facility. But they did point out that the innovation of Under Sheriff Paul by getting that treadmill and putting it in a corner and having some kind of exercise routine for him was, was also an exceptional thing to do, but we have, we deal with.
We have a nineteen fifty-four building, you know, the existing conditions that are, but that, that's a great example, along with that is the fresh air by having that next to a window that is secured, that comes along with that exercise area and everything, so, yeah.
Well, a completely, completely new, a few years back, air handling system, the pain, the cleanliness, that's what I notice every time I go up there, you know, it's just, ten years ago, we went there, and as you alluded to, there's a couple of things we can't do because with the existing building, we can't make it bigger, you know, stretch the walls or do those types of things. I applaud all of the work that's going into that to lead to this type of rating. Probably not politically correct, I'm going to say it anyway. I, I just, I feel bad that you all, when we get these kind of, we answer every complaint or every notification of something, but you've got so much work to do. It's, it's a shame that we have to take up our time with these kind of things when we know, in, at least here in the coordination, we know the professionalism and the caring and, and the great work that goes on, and these distractions just are really getting old. So, thank you for all that you do and all that your folks do.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Very well said.
We're getting close, Todd.
You know how impatient Todd is?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just sitting there, wringing my hands.
I think like a forty-five minute, fifty-minute break. We get people from Portland where we might have them make themselves.
Denise, why don't we take the five-minute break?
I'm here.
And we'll come back and have our Up City inputs on.
Levi, I think about the, 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 yeah. And this is who, your girlfriend works here?
Yeah, she's working, kind of, in the, in the, so, her name is Jessie Griffin.
My BLM side.
Yeah, she's-
My wife works on the fourth, fourth, and I, I get to know some of the people. They hear my name, you know?
Yeah, she's, she just finished her last year. She's, she's just-
I'm working.
Yeah, hi. I'm pretty sure I've met you before, but I somehow talked together.
Yes. Good to see you.
It was so long, like people like out of the weeds and they were like. Good show. Hello again. We did, we were surprised, we were getting up to go and then they just went for.
Come back in from our recess and our next item is a timed item, obsidian renewables. Welcome.
Thank you.
So first meeting and the new experience. How do you like it? Denise designed it.
So we, we have a few things on the agenda today that we wanted to.
I apologize, I gotta go get my marked-up copy, so.
Oh, okay.
Make sure that I ask a question that I want to.
Are you gonna go in order?
I think so.
Yeah, I can see.
Sorry about that, Kay.
So, yeah, so there are three, three topics we wanted to hand over with you guys today. I think we spoke to each one of you individually before we made. So, so we're building a, we're in the process of developing the airport project, airport solar project. And, and we currently have a lease agreement, or a lease option agreement in place with you guys for three hundred and twenty acres of the airport to build the big project up there. The project is proceeding along as these large projects often do. They, you know, they take, they take time to put together the studies and the financing and the power purchase agreements with, you know, so the thousands of them, so. We've talked to some, some different people that are interested in financing the project and one thing that they would like to see is a longer-term lease agreement with the county. Presumably we exercised the option to lease and our current plan is to, of course, do that. But they'd like to see a longer lease term, an additional five years on the, on the lease after we exercised the option. In the belief that the, so the modules and the project equipment has a longer, a longer lifespan than we've, we've kind of anticipated, putting in the agreement, it's kind of standard, twenty-five years and that standard is creeping up to thirty and thirty-five years in some cases, so they'd like to have the lease agreement at least have the ability to go out to thirty years instead of twenty-five years. So that's the, that's the first item. We've, we've sent you an addendum to the option agreement that would accomplish that extension of the lease. And so we wanted to see if we could get, get you guys to review that and approve that tomorrow, so.
Okay, and on the option agreement, amendment or addendum to it, and I mentioned this a little bit. Fourth of July celebration there. Actually, last night, within that option agreement, it talks about the red zone. And is that something at this time that you would want to come up and add also?
Well, I, I looked at that, the language in the, in the agreement this morning and I, Commissioner Winters, I think it takes care of itself through operation of law. I don't think we need to change the addendum because in the, in the payment with a tax and the pilot language, the statutes regarding that says you can't do both. So if we do go with the pilot agreement on it, by operation of law, we wouldn't be able to do the red zone anyway. So I don't think, I don't think we need to do anything with it.
I just looking at D in there, it spelled right out along with.
Yeah, yeah, so, but, you know, if we, if we did the pilot agreement, it would just be ineffective, I guess. It would just by default, you wouldn't be able to do it because you didn't have the pilot agreement. So, so that way, you know, if, for some reason, if you guys didn't let us do the pilot agreement, then we're gonna talk about that next, but, or if something happens to the pilot program before the project gets built and they cancel it or something, or we'll still, if we leave it in the agreement, we'll still have something to fall back on if the pilot program goes away for some reason or something. We don't anticipate that, but, you know.
If you're comfortable with it.
Yeah, I think so.
You never do know, like your board is gonna become, before it's gonna look like it's the Board of Commissioners, we're all elected.
Yeah, well, we worked on a, if, if you, if you agree to put us on a pilot agreement, then you can't do the red zone, so. I mean, you can't, you know, so it just, and the, the language that says, you know, we need to work in good faith to do that and I think we're working in good faith to do that. Other questions?
Well, I think when we talked at the date, Todd, and you're gonna get to the pilot part of this, but you'd said, I think, that instead of forty-five, we're talking about forty-seven megawatts on this particular project.
That's the current design. It could, it could go a couple megawatts, you know, we're waiting, kind of depending on what modules and what design and after, frankly, after doing some studies out there, we might find some areas we need to avoid or something like that.
Sure.
Right now, the design is for forty-seven megawatts.
Yeah, I made a note of that with regard to the, you know, we wrote an exact megawatt amount into the pilot agreements, but there is a good possibility as things roll out that it would change just a little bit, one direction or the other, either avoidance or one great thing we're seeing is just improvements in technology and we're able to get just a little bit more power out of the same, out of the same land, so.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So we, you know, we, because we have to put something on paper, we put in an exact amount, but there is a good possibility on the pilots, we may have to come back and say, oh, it's gonna be forty-eight point two or, or forty-five point five or something like that, so we may have to.
Well, on the pilot, if I remember right, and I've read the pilot for a while, it's whatever the tags on the actual.
Yeah, and we did write in an exact megawatt amount, but, yeah, they could, we may have to just come back and screech it one way or the other, depending on.
Yeah, it's really easy to, there's no wiggle room in what it is, it's mainly capacity, so it's whatever. Whatever it is, while we get done with it, that's what it is.
I'm trying to find the way to make our own tags put on there.
Yeah.
From one to two megawatts.
That's an engineer's idea.
Biggest three megawatts thing you've ever seen.
So, so the other question, Todd, and we talked about that the other day too, is, you know, the timing. You've put down a payment to hold this option, but at the end of that time, depending on what's going on, I just want to be sure we have clarity as to how.
Sure. So, at this time, we're not asking for an extension of the actual option period, okay? We don't think we're gonna need to do that. We think we're gonna be under construction in 2018, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't need to, we wouldn't need to extend the option period, we just exercised the option forward. So that's where we are right now.
So on the record, if you exercise the option, then that will kick in the lease agreement on the end and stuff?
So we're in a little bit of a go or no time right now. There's a, just on a macro level, there's a federal tax credit that is winding down and on the state level, there was a bill passed a few months ago requiring that the state go to a fifty percent renewable portfolio. And so utilities right now are looking very hard at trying to get as much renewables as they can while we have the benefit of the federal, the federal tax credit. So to our best guess, airport's gonna go soon?
Yeah.
Or, and that's, that's what we're hoping.
Yeah, just trying to make sure we're, we're clear as, I'm sure there's a lot of two, there's different people. Move through these chairs, but so we're real clear on if that doesn't happen and what happens to our benefits and stuff.
So with that said, under the option agreement and under the grant of option, you want to extend this for another five years, so it should reflect on there because it says only additional five years, you want another one besides that, is that what?
Yeah, so, yeah, the only wording that was changed on the addendum is to, is to add two additional five-year periods. We should underline that, the original agreement says one additional five years.
Yeah, and so, because there's dollars associated with that, so if it, it goes up twelve hundred and eighty dollars each year and for the county side, I want to make sure that it says that it continues for, that we're gonna go in another two, five years extension each year it's gonna do.
Yeah.
And I think it's probably.
I think it says that in the original agreement.
Probably, pretty much is covered, but we just need to make sure that it, that it's there.
Understood, yeah.
On that part.
Yeah, we, we copied the words exactly and added the word two additional five years, so I think, I think that should be clear.
And it does, it does, it says that it will increase that much, that much.
Per year.
Per year, so if we do the addendum, that would be.
I wanted to thought of, you know, we do twenty-five years and then the last five is free.
Yeah.
Didn't think you'd go that way.
You know, for that last five years, it's negotiable today, if you can break ground by this afternoon, we'll talk it out.
Get your shovel.
So, coming on my thirtieth birthday, it's, it's still holding.
There you go.
There you go.
You'll just be talking about me, because I'm not a litup. I think that covered everything I had on that.
Okay. So the next topic is the solar payment with a tax agreement, it's a little bit of color, a little background on this. We came to the county last year.
Yep.
I guess last year and converted all of our existing solar projects in the county to the newest, latest and greatest program, the payment with a tax program. Moved our projects in climate county to the pilot agreement as well, so just trying to get some consistency. We think it's a good program, we helped craft the language and the, and the law to where it provides some certainty to the development community as well as the counties for budgeting purposes and for, to the sensors offices, you know, so there won't be appeals and things like that that we're fighting over for the next twenty years and trying to value these solar plans. So the program's pretty simple, it's seven thousand dollars per megawatt under the pilot agreement for, and our last agreements were the twenty-year agreements, these are twenty-year agreements that we're proposing for our, kind of the three projects that are under development by the county right now. And so we think it's a pretty good deal for kind of all parties on the area to, to put everything under these, under these agreements.
And either one, the fossil lake or the airport, either one is starting to direct taxing.
Right, I think that's right.
Airport never, we never did anything, I'm pretty certain we didn't for fossil either.
I think that's one of the, within the legislation, if there are any.
Yeah, we figured it out early enough to wait.
So tomorrow, you're asking for us to accept that?
There's three, three projects. There's the airport project.
Fossil Lake and Fremont.
Fossil Lake and Fremont.
The one that, the one that. Here I just looked at.
Yeah, the, the only, really only thing of note that's a little bit, a little wrinkle is on the Fremont project issue. You should see a map there. We're not exactly sure which site we're gonna put that project on. So identify, we identified two potential project sites, so there's, there's a Fremont site that's kind of standalone, but we're also considering moving the Fremont next to.
I don't know if we put a map, we just put a description of the lands, I'll just bring my colorful map here. So this is, this is where Fremont is currently and this is where we have our conditional use permit. This is the fossil lake property and this is where we have a conditional use for fossil lake. With what's going on with that legislation, it may benefit us cost-wise to try and put everything together. It looks like interconnection wise, we can do that, so for that reason, we are requesting for the fossil lake pilot for that to be applicable to, and either or, so we're not asking for two different pilots, we're basically just asking if it's possible that we're able to move the Fremont site up to here. Can we make it applicable to this tax lot instead?
So we'll do the pilot agreement for Fremont, but it could be on one or two different sites.
Are we allowed?
Well, here's an interesting thing. We looked back at the pilot agreements that we did with you last year and we didn't actually even tie them to a piece of property, so we thought.
Boy, we screwed up.
I know, when I, when I look back at that, I thought, wow, a lot of eyes looked at that. So we haven't, we haven't jumped through this too before, but we do think it's an improvement that we actually tied this to a tax lot. So I, I don't think there's any legal reason why, and it is either or, we're not asking you to approve both properties for a pilot. We just don't, we simply don't know whether Fremont's gonna be developed in one place or the other.
So pushing you, why wouldn't you want to go ahead and have an agreement on a pilot on both properties? Is there a timeframe or something on this?
Well, we don't have another property, we don't have another project in development.
Okay.
There's just one, one project and we're just.
I wanna ask Darwin from the land use, where we're at with, I mean, this is approved.
So fossil lake, I believe, is right, the property that you're talking about expanding to the north.
Yeah.
And that will require an amendment to their existing conditional use permit, which we, offline, we've already talked about and, you know, so, you know, both projects already stand independently approved and, you know, I see no reason why, you know, this pilot wouldn't work for both sites currently and then just expand, you know, or at least have language that says that, that fossil lake would, or could possibly expand to include that other, you know, roughly eighty acres to the, to the north of the existing approval.
Darwin, how would, as Lori pointed out, the ones that they looked at from last year weren't actually tied to a piece of land, but.
It was probably project name is my guess.
Yeah, we just.
Which then would have a land use decision that does show a boundary.
Okay.
And I guess, you know, at that point, those things were pretty well in existence and, you know, they were moving forward, so it was just kind of clear where it would be. With Fremont and fossil lake, there's a lot of moving pieces still out there. We have a lot of pieces in place, but with this legislation change, it's looking like it may be better for us to try and make things a little bigger and do it all at once if we can.
Yeah. I'm gonna go backwards here for a minute to our agreement specifically, I mean, it applies to all of them, but it occurred to me on the airport one, where we're talking about leasing county lands. We've got the pill tied to twenty years, but now if we approve the extension. We've got the pill tied to twenty years, but now if we approve the extension of the lease agreement, we could be up to thirty-five years on leasing the ground. But nothing known certainly beyond the twenty years.
Well, what?
Goes to normal taxation.
Yeah, it just goes to normal taxation at that point, so, you know, at that point, the, it'll be pretty low. Thirty, you know, thirty, thirty years on the, on the equipment, so.
About twenty years.
Oh, sorry, twenty, twenty, twenty-five years on the equipment, so, yeah, it'll just go under the other taxation. It'll be in a, what, what'll happen is it'll, the county will likely go to an income method approach. Equipment's not gonna be worth much, but it'll still be generating significant income.
But through the department of revenue, they'll come up with the department.
Yeah, it's still under central assessment.
So I thought the department of revenue allowed the owner of the equipment to determine whether it was going to be assessed on the equipment.
Wish, wish it did. No, no, it's, it's under central assessment, so they have several, several different methods they can use to calculate value. That's one thing nice about the pilot agreement, while the agreement's in place, there's no fighting back and forth about that. So once it, but once it's off, then it just goes into regular central assessment taxation. And there's no question in my mind, it would be the income tax, it would be the income method. So they'll, they'll do a double evaluation on the property based on the income method, making a determination as to taxation at that point.
So by tomorrow, we need to have the question answered, Denise, by our legal counsel, is if we're able to have a pilot put together that can be moved from one to the other. From the Fremont site can be moved up next to the fossil lake site, and make sure that we can do that. I don't have a problem as long as our legal counsel says, yes, that's within the guidelines of the legislation. Build them. That's the only thing on that part that I can think of, is just to make sure that we're all in the long frame.
The other two projects, the airport and the fossil lake project, I don't know where they're gonna be.
Yeah, they're very strategic. And again, yeah, sizes may change in minimal amounts as we finalize design, or if there's equipment improvements that we don't know about yet, you know, we, we may have to just come back and, and tweak things with you. But I don't expect it to be, you know, it could be like a five percent change, not a big change. Unless we find a lot of cultural resource at the airport or something.
Or unless there's some kind of, you know, shift in paradigm on, you know, natural efficiency or something like that.
So I, I want to take this opportunity, just because of, there has been some controversy on the airport. So just, just for the, the record is that if and when you build on the airport, adjacent landowner, I would very much appreciate it if you worked with an adjacent landowner to the west. If there is a need or a want to put up a burn or something for the visual, so that, work with him very closely. Through the land use side of it, they were a little upset, and I assured them that Oxidian Renewables is very good to work with, and if you reach out to them as you're starting to develop, they're a good neighbor side of the world.
We, we have reached out to them, and I can't remember Darwin's name, it's the guy that was the subway.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, we, we've talked to him, we've worked out on it, I, we've walked through the process with them a couple times, and we agreed to basically build him a row of, the tall tree, the little trees there. You know, to kind of block their view, you know, part of the way down, so I, you know, I think.
Will it be on his thing?
Don't get his property.
Okay, and he'll irritate it in the land?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, good, thank you.
And we, you know, because we, you know, he identified that concern to us early on, and, and we, you know, we dealt with him. He's the only, he's the only neighboring property owner that had anything to say.
And so if you get a chance to continue to touch base with him, I think those neighborhood relationships are, they are very important. That one there is very important to me, because I basically promised that you guys would be working well.
Yeah, yeah. That'd probably be me, that's.
That's you?
Yeah, I'm kind of the, who's on the ground when we start projects, so I'll be talking to them.
Looks like you're beating a lot of subway.
I'm getting the subway.
They tried to lock us into something. I was like, man, can't do that.
But, but no, the, through the land use side, Darwin said back there, there was some concerns.
No, he showed it to the, he showed it to CFPs and.
So the other landowner is us, the county, the layers on to the airport.
Sounds like you're gonna launch a subway.
I, I, you know, and I haven't talked to Darwin at all about our land use approvals. I do have a few concerns as we move forward, and I know we can address them, but, you know, we've got some dips and b-dos out there and everything, but land disturbance, because it is the airport, not so much the solar panels, but any dust and, you know, any, any type of disturbance that gives us air soil.
Oh, as far as during construction?
Well, during and even after, that we don't have every bit of vegetation ripped up.
Yeah, yep.
We actually have ground matter there that is gonna hold that soil in place, because we do get a little.
Yeah, we don't, we don't plan on.
City's already learned that lesson.
Right. Yeah, and, and that's for future discussion, but it's just something that.
They'll beat the brush out there, so it doesn't, so we can allow at least some, something to hold it down, and then vegetation comes back, actually. More, more quickly than we like.
Well, yeah, too fast for you guys.
Yeah, and they, it'll be good, you know, we're, we're about to start on the Black Cap project, so you'll be able to see how that goes. They're starting on that this month, so we can, you know, keep an eye on comments.
Okay, thank you. Non-disturbance agreement.
Non-disturbance agreement. So I guess I should give the background on this one, because I went through the process with Darwin, and the poor guy, I can't believe he doesn't have as many gray hairs as, as he should. We went through that process with you to have a, a study done of all, of several of our properties for the potential for geological resource. And fossil lake was found to have some probability of having diatonaceous earth. And so we decided not to try to go through an actual transfer process as we did for the properties that we worked with you last year on that were found to have no probability of, of resource. So we thought it would, and we had actually drafted this non-disturbance agreement last year and had Jim Bailey look at it with respect to Black Cap, the one that we're developing right now, they, eight megawatts on seventy acres. So I think Jim Bailey has looked at this non-disturbance agreement and found it to be agreeable. And we think that this will give us enough certainty and probably shortcut the whole process of, you know, trying to figure out a value for, you know, diatonaceous earth.
And transferring it.
And transferring it, going through the whole.
It's an arduous process to go through the whole transfer process, so.
And it was pretty costly for us, it, you know, it ended up being pretty expensive. And again, we had that same situation that we had with the pilot, so we have the fossil lake that we have, the current fossil lake outline that we have our current land use approval for, and then we have that, those two tax lots to the north. And just, this one happens to be owned by fossil lake, which is a subsidiary of, of Oxidian. The land to the north is owned by Oxidian Renewables, so we drafted up two separate non-disturbance agreements.
One for one half and one for mid.
Yeah. In my conversation with Ken Kessner on the phone, he actually preferred this direction rather than the transfer. Yeah, he just felt that, you know, we haven't seen anything here yet, but it's a more conservative tactic to, to not for going rights.
So I'm gonna throw you for a loop here on the Black Cap, you've mentioned eight megawatts on seventy acres, so we have a good chunk of that seventy not developed? Isn't it the rule of the, about seven acres per megawatt?
Seventy, seventy eight, yeah, I don't think it's on.
Maybe it's on sixty.
Yeah, I thought that's sixty, I think the total, that's a bit of a calculator, it's kind of weird.
Yeah, with Darwin's got a funny shape, so that, that, when we have a nice square, it's really easy to get the maximum megawatts per acre. Black Cap has a funny shape, so we had to shorten some tracker rows, and we have a little cultural area that we have to avoid.
We first bought property there, about eighty acres, so we used twenty, we used twenty acres of it for the first big project for.
Six.
Yeah, and then we used, I want to say, ten of it for the, for the four-hitch farm and the kind of front property there, and we probably used another ten.
For three sixty-three.
Three sixty-three and five hundred, so we have some, we have some, we have some land at the top of that. So the eight megawatt project that we're gonna build, it's basically horseshoes around the existing project, but, so it's a little bit.
I was just curious, I.
Yeah, and then there's an area, there's an area way out there, underway for cultural and stuff.
And it happened to be, you know, it's like, they, the trackers are long, so it cuts out a whole tracker, basically. I should have brought a picture, but.
It's not far to drive off from.
Yeah? Pretty soon there'll be something seen.
So when do you anticipate starting there?
This month. Yeah, there, Anderson was out there during the, placing the survey markers for the fence. We spoke to Brad last night, we're looking for the guy who's got cows out there, so we can give them a heads up.
Haven't had a chance to check on Denise, do you know who's running their cows right across from the great mcpham, look in, there were the.
We don't.
They used to be Jim Orton, but I don't know who took over.
Yeah.
Though we expect to have kind of mobilization after the next couple of weeks.
Great.
Yep, we're gonna have a.
They'll probably be here through October.
Yeah, we'll be done here, a bunch of us from Oxidian will be done here again on the twentieth to just have our first kickoff meeting, so we'll see you then in a couple weeks.
As, you know, as these things go, they go, once they get going, they go pretty quick. You know, kind of, we, we won't see much going on after next, but we have forty people out there.
Yeah, that's great.
Laurie, your map of the Fremont project that you showed in the house, the two different locations, can I make a copy?
Sure, you can just add it, Laurie can get it to legal counsel. Super, thank you.
So is there anything else?
We're gonna make a decision, we're gonna.
Is legal counsel gonna be here tomorrow?
He's available via phone tomorrow.
Yeah, just if there's anything we can get tied right up with him, if there.
Would I order the building touch one up there?
Yeah. So, real quick, Denise and I looked at an email that, that Jim Bailey had sent back when we were going through the mineral rights transfer. You were CC'd on it as well, July, off the, twenty-seventh was the date.
From last year?
A little bit of an amendment to the language.
It was January.
Jan, sorry, July.
Oh, okay. Jan, okay, he had an amendment to the language of that agreement, yeah.
Sorry. You may have already included it.
I may have, but I'm not sure.
It was just, it was talked about section three, which reads, without written permission from Oxidian, which this will allow the county to discuss potential disturbances. So you said behind that in the first sentence, so, it was look back at that, and then, I'll get a copy of Denise, maybe I'll export it.
Okay.
We have three, four tomorrow, right after this.
I think I, I think I did actually put that in, but let's double check that.
Very good, thanks a lot.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay. Excuse me, our next item on the agenda is the bid process exemption.
Yeah, I can kind of bring this forward right now.
She's been, she's been helping me sign.
Rock question going on, I guess, is with federal, of course, on federal lands, grants going on. This is more of an association with that, that all this would be, of course, in three quarters minus, would be used for shoulder rock. And under, under drill mine, exemption on drill mine for because savings, and there's no other avenues to get it out there at this point. Legal counsel advised that we're able to do this, and so tomorrow I would like to approve that, and I do have an email in to legal counsel to make sure everything looks.
He responded, and he said it's exactly the wording that he provided, so.
Okay, so you, you've seen the email, so we're good to go tomorrow on that one?
And I emailed him as well.
Pardon me?
I emailed him as well.
Oh, you did too, also, thank you. So that's on for tomorrow?
And our next item is the OLCC temporary sales license slash order of the analog.
Yeah.
Ratification, but I don't know if I agree with that.
Yeah, I actually signed that, they came in and needed to ratify that, so I, I would make the, make the motion to go ahead and accept that ratification today and just take it off our agenda. Move to ratify the signing of the OLCC temporary sales license order.
Yeah, I was kind of having a discussion in my own commission, but I'll second it.
Discussion?
Airport's the cap. Yeah, motion's been made in segment two to ratify the order of the analog OLCC temporary sales license. That period of time is for July fifteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth, two thousand sixteen. Any other discussion?
It just, they had a timeframe to get it back in, they'll get their, and their track together, there's reason why it was signed early.
Okay.
Aye.
I don't care if they're gonna take that off Denise. Public transit agreement number three-one-three-seven discretionary funds, Denise.
Discretionary funds, these are our funds that we were just awarded by, I don't know, the state of Oregon in regard to expansion of our bus farm that we're gonna be building in Christmas Valley. It's fifteen thousand dollars.
And where exactly is that bus farm going? I wanted to ask you that the other day.
So, I mean, we're going to the parking lot of the Amex, and we have the back parking lot, where the trees are, it's just on the other side of those trees, on the right-hand side of that.
Actually, maybe you told us that the other day.
I think I did, but that's okay. It's good for the public to know where it's gonna go to, so.
That's great. Okay. Any other department updates for today?
I will let you gentlemen know that on the twenty-first, I do anticipate for special transportation funds, we're gonna be working on our transportation planning. So I've got Kettleson coming, Joni Branlet from ODOT will be here, we will hold public meetings beginning at nine o'clock in Wakefield, and then we will travel to Christmas Valley that afternoon for public meetings. Then September or July twenty-first, so, so a busy time for special transportation. We're also getting ready for our very first audit in September for special transportation. Also, good note, our two new vans arrived last week, they are fantastic, senior center is very excited to get those in service, they're gonna work out really well for them. So lots going on in special transportation.
So Denise, tomorrow, we had two items that were on the line for tomorrow, the mental health RMP considerations, which we have on the agenda. And I'm probably just not, oh, I see it, ten oh five, got it, okay.
Okay.
So for.
For the public hearing?
Go ahead.
Throughout, I was just gonna move on the layers on that case.
Well, I just, on the mental health request for proposal consideration, it's three o'clock, right?
Three o'clock for.
Three o'clock for, um, the recommendation to come forward in your discussion.
Uh, meeting's on, I think, just give them two, you said.
Do we have a time?
We will start at one-thirty.
Okay, you answered my question. That's gonna be information gathered.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So, liaison updates, uh, I have a few.
I, I guess probably, uh, a couple of things. One thing I definitely wanna get out there is, uh, the State Museum, everything is right there. As a matter of fact, uh, the state ladies of T A R was trying to make it happen by July one. I think this week we will see, um, that it is right at closure. And what it's looking like is that all the projects that slated to be done over there, the way that it will work is, is that those dollars would be held and turned over to the county for us to go ahead with those projects, make those projects happen. So, that's, that's a very, very positive thing. We're right there, everything's going good. As everybody knows, we're starting into art chips hill and paving site on the road department. Everything's going good out there. We're actually starting a little bit of water users today, uh, on the, cutting the approaches and everything. Not that I'm pleased, and I've just been in contact with a little bit out there. So, the public just needs to know it's our busy time of the year, chip ceiling and paving. Hope the public's all very considerate of our flag girls and our crews out there at this time, they do good work for us. As we just mentioned, the mental health, RFP, everything's going forward. Um, our contract with CCS has been going well, continuing on. And tomorrow afternoon, hopefully, there will be a recommendation come to the board of commissioners on one of the two, uh, people that turned in on the RFP process. It can be for one of them, or it could be for no recommendation at all. I don't see that happening, but, um, our advisory board will be making that recommendation tomorrow at three. Um, as we're moving forward there, so, um, that's probably enough for right now. Oh, I, I do need to add, I'm sorry, um, this Friday, we're, um, area committee on, South Central Area Committee on Transportation Pool Board meeting in Highland Falls. Butch will be, um, we will be, we will have a talk there coming from Lake and Highland County. Butch is retiring end of July. With that, um, definitely hope that both other commissioners besides myself is able to be there. On the agenda will be time for a region manager to talk about the structure and replacement of an area manager, uh, whether they will or will not. Obviously, I'm very supportive for that position to be refilled and think it's absolutely necessary for, for our area. So, um, have that, uh, on Friday, hope you're able to make it, and Commissioner Kessner also. And then, um, next week, we do have a special meeting with, uh, under executive session, if I'm not mistaken, on Wednesday the thirteenth, under Railroad. Covered part of what I wanted to say.
We have time, if you want to cover the other part.
I, I think I got, I'll, I'll think of something else here in a minute, go ahead.
Well, this Thursday, I'll be in Bend, and I'll be meeting with the, uh, chair and the executive director of, and as well as Commissioner Bane from the Shute County, in the morning, on our Western Regional Strategy Group. Commissioner Bane got up to me after she attended the WIR meeting in Jackson Hole, Wyoming, and was part of the panel group. She was the moderator, uh, dealing with the COEC strategies specifically on the urban interface and how we might move that as county is nationally forward and how we approach that. I had a brainstorming session with the chair last Thursday, I think it was, and then Joe Stettler. So, it'll be kind of a continuation of that, but it'll be with our executive director, Katie Lighthall, Commissioner Tammy Bane, and Chair Joe Stettler. At the conclusion of that, I'll be going over, I'm going to try and arrange it to be going over with Commissioner Alan Unger, Alan Unger from the Shute County, our COWC, the Central Oregon Workforce Coalition, that will be working on the adoption, assuming we get that far, which we have to for all of our service providers for our East Cascades Workforce Investment Board budget, it's the first one. First full year budget, uh, all of our service providers are in place. And the little wrinkle is apparently all of the other ten county members, as, as you know, it goes from the Columbia all the way down to the California border, just on the east side of the Cascades, that Central Oregon, Northern Oregon, Southern Oregon corridor. Commissioner Malley and I apparently are the only two that don't have a conflict related to it. And so, we've really, it's been emphasized, need to be present, which I was going to be anyway, but it's kind of ironic that eight out of ten had that conflict. And most of it's around sitting on existing boards, or them service providers. As you mentioned, the SCLAC meeting, I fully intend to be there, I believe it starts at ten o'clock in the first and federal Outback Conference Room there off South Six. I've been keeping Denise for sure, I think I sent to you, Commissioner, as well, the kind of the schedule, the evolving schedule. It hasn't changed much for the Oregon State Water Resources Board, the governor's, uh, drought task force, um, committee. And I have a meeting, the first kickoff meeting, they're gonna be, they've said, you know, they, they may vary, but right now, they're planning on full day, and this first one will be a full day meeting on the nineteenth, uh, of July, over in Salem. And, uh, so I'll be representing, I'm gonna be representing Eastern Oregon counties. I, I think it's all of the counties because we have some folks in the Water Committee that are very interested. Couple of different commissioners, Alan Unger is one, and then, uh, from Polk County. Pope, Craig Pope, from Polk County. I've talked to the state folks, and they said that both of them are, have a very big interest in it. And so, I'll be coordinating with them, as well as many of our entities that like red is water and future droughts and how those droughts are addressed as far as priorities and processes. Uh, biomass legislative group is continuing to work feverishly at getting together. We've got a draft, uh, proposed legislation, talked to Riley Schu from Congressman Walden's office last week. Prior to our, our bi-weekly conference call on the biomass legislation. Uh, he's working with Julia Bradley-Cook from Senator Whitehead's office in D.C. Uh, so that perhaps when this is introduced, it can be introduced with concurrence of both the Senate, because it will be Senator Whitehead introducing it, and the House, and Congressman Walden's gonna run a hand in that. There's, there's biomass committee in the House, and I don't think he's a participant in that, but, uh, we're hoping to get that going sooner than later. The big question mark right now is that, uh, they will be going into recess in the next ten days or so for the summer recess. Don't think we're gonna see it, introduce prior to recess time, so it'll probably be sometime in September when they come back from recess. Which is going to be a great thing. We continue as a group, we're continuing to work with interested supporters of the legislation and the process. So, it's moving forward real well.
Very good.
Okay. We don't have anything else coming before us today. We will adjourn our work session of July fifth, two thousand sixteen at eleven o'clock.